We'll start with a flag salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So, we will have an approval of our agenda this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda.
Okay. For a second? I don't need a second.
No.
Any discussion on that? For movement around or anything to add to the agenda last minute? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Public comments? Nobody has signed in. So, we will just move right along. Did you have anything?
No.
Okay. And we'll start with board member comments, and then we will start from the right tonight. How far?
Me.
All the way down.
All right. I think the only thing that I did this last was the vigil. The vigil went off beautifully. And when the only thing that happened was when Randy was up talking, the only man that talked, the sprinkler system went off. It was, but it really did kinda cut through anybody that was feeling likewise, a man's talking right now. But he did such a wonderful job. But it was, it cut any of the bad feelings or anything like that. It was so how everybody came together, but we kept going, and it was wonderful.
A little bit of comic relief? Maybe, maybe a little bit of comic relief?
A little bit, yeah, a little bit. But it got the turning point out there to women and children to know that there is a place to go for when they have domestic violence issues, that they can go there. And so, they're growing even more now, so pretty amazing.
Okay, well, because I wasn't here last month, I'm going to shoot back to graduation and just say how much I enjoyed that and what a wonderful gathering it was of our community. And we had such a great feeling of just, this is where we need to be. Also, I went to the environmental ed outdoor classroom dedication at Sand Hill towards the end of May, and that was very nice. And Michael Sipthroth and the teacher at Sand Hill, my name escapes me right now.
Amy Radke.
Amy Radke. Both did a nice job of explaining the evolution of that outdoor classroom. And it was very nice, it was attended well. And also, I went to the Hawkins Middle School music performance, and there were, I counted, 203 students involved in the performance. And not all of them were there for various reasons, but we do have about 48 string orchestra students that are coming up, well, there's about 30 of them, I think, 35, that are coming up from the middle school to the high school. And my concern, and I talked to Joe about it, the middle school principal, was that there wouldn't be a program for them at the high school. But she explained, and you could probably explain it better, that there's going to be a zero hour class, or they're gonna, they will be going over to the middle school for that.
For next year. That was what the music teams decided, that they weren't quite ready to add another music position at the high school, and that Chris Dury and his department and the Hawkins teacher were gonna partner to figure out and get those high school kids coming back over for instruction next year with the plan to add an orchestra class the following year.
So, would that be during their high school day, then?
They're still working on it.
Before, okay. Okay. All right, well, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks. I also missed the meeting last time, and I would like to echo what you said about the graduation ceremony. I had one, one public member that I will say belly ached about, we'll never fit them in next year, but that was it. So, I thought we would fit them next year. But any case, other things, I have not been able to do very much at all, school district-wise, except almost serendipitously, the sixth grade camp is coming to Camp McLeod, where I live and work at, in September, and the middle school people came for that, well, Todd Herring did, along with Mrs. Bastian. And he's now left, and so, there'll be some further stuff going on with the change over there for that. But they did a little planning meeting with me at the camp, actually, it was all over a month ago. And Mrs. Bastian got quite excited, as it turns out, even though she's a glamper instead of a camper. She remembers going to Camp McLeod as a girl. And she did fess up to how old she is, and I can tell you, I was there when she was there as a girl. Anyway, I don't remember, of course, but anyway, that was just a little fun thing for me on that. Otherwise, while I've not been able to do anything with school board, it's because of the computer. Because the Girl Scout camp is so loaded with kids and with adults who are doing their, not so much the kids, the adults, the cell phones and the other stuff, they are taking what little bandwidth the BSL line has out there, given to the camp, because we're the very end of the line. Everyone at Haven Lake, Wooten Lake and stuff gets it first. And so, what little there is, they've taken it all up. I cannot get the school district computer to even load. When it does finally load, there's nothing populated in any of the folders and stuff like that, and I can't even, I can't even get to the agenda. So, I had to come in today, several hours early, in order to be able to catch up with stuff for this, this meeting. And so, I'm gonna probably have to do that again for at least, at least for the rest of the summer.
Start sending a carrier pigeon.
Yep. That's a possibility, except they're extinct.
We could provide paper of everything, too, for the summer.
Well, I can come in early for a board meeting for that, it's just, that means, you know, fortunately, I didn't get any emails, but I've caught up to them, and I, that's why I mentioned to you earlier that, you know, I wasn't able to help you with superintendent evaluation on computer-wise, or, you know, back and forth, or, because I didn't have it, didn't get it. But thanks. In any case, that's where I've been in. So, I'm glad to be back, and I'm sort of caught up right now with both of the email and with the agenda. Thanks.
For me, I just saw, I think, in the paper, a week or, not a week ago, about a day or two ago, South Kids App Schools is going to be going for, trying again for bond for North High School, and just reminds me how thankful I am that we were successful with ours. It's a district that struggled quite a bit getting one. Also, just kind of from my own personal statement, there was a article in the paper a week or so ago regarding the enhancement center getting grants on our behalf for the Delaware Wetlands. From my perspective, I just kinda wanted out there that I don't necessarily appreciate those actions without consulting the owners of that property. I appreciate their interest in wanting to do stuff, but it would be great if they would communicate with us their intention a little bit more than what has been going on. So, that's all I have.
I've mainly been focused on going through the WASDA positions and figuring out what my priorities would be, and we'll have an opportunity to share a few words with you later in the meeting, but that's mainly what I've been doing.
Awesome. All right, student board member comments. Spencer?
I don't have anything.
Okay. That was easy. Consent items for the consent agenda. And there's the MTA letter of support, previous meeting minutes, accounts payable, personnel report, payroll. I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Any discussion?
Hold on a second.
Okay.
Without finding it on the thing, I think it was the Miles contract? Or maybe it was the Therapia contract? They had some acronyms in there, or not even acronym, but some PC, PBA, or whatever. What does that mean? Not sure what it was.
ABA, consultant services, is that what you're talking about?
It could have been, although it might have been the Therapia. I'll take out the Therapia.
I'm scrolling through. You're looking at just?
It was just a four-page document, the contract.
The contract.
Oh, that's not this one, that's 12-page.
Yeah. And it was, you know, they were?
B C B A?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
What were those things?
I am not sure. I will have to read through it carefully.
It sounded like that was maybe a term for a person, but I really couldn't tell that from the text.
Do you know what page it's on?
It's the first page.
It's page one, under A.
Duties of the consultant.
Duties of the consultant.
Are the B C A B A?
Yeah.
Sir?
Casey B A, I think.
There's three of them, and I got the sense that maybe the one with the small little A was not necessarily insistent, but one of them, they referred to as, and almost like an intern.
Paraprofessionals.
Yeah, paraprofessional, the RBT one.
The RBT is, yeah.
And so, that made me think the other two were more trained, more skilled people.
Well, where's not, so you must be talking not about the Therapia, but the?
It's the?
It's the Miles A B A services.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, that makes it easier. I was trying to figure it out in the context of nursing. So, yeah, that is a person that actually comes in and works with staff and with helping with a plan for the student and providing insight under the direction of the consultant. So, the RBT is similar to a paraprofessional, but they have specific skills and additional training to work with kids with significant behaviors.
Board certified assistant behavior analyst.
How is that one of the?
And actually, it isn't impossible that we will be looking at maybe having those kinds of classified positions in our district in the future, but for right now, we're contracting there.
There is a correction that needs to be made, that contract, removing Bremerton and adding North Mason.
Yeah. Okay.
That's under B for the duties of consultant.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no other questions regarding any of the items in the consent agenda.
All right. We had a discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. We are moving on to the Phil Pugh Stadium scoreboard quote, number three.
Okay. So, we've been talking about getting that scoreboard put in place. We have done a lot of research and negotiations, and the documents are included that kind of describe what we're getting for this dollar amount, but, and it is through one of our...
It's through KCD.
So, it's not a situation where we have to have multiple bids, because they've already done that work for us. We are, however, recommending that we approve this quote and go ahead and install the scoreboard as described. It will have a lot of capabilities for our use for all sorts of sports, as well as for community uses. And if we host playoff games and those kinds of things, we're able to adjust who the home and the way is and have all sorts of digital art and things as part of the scoreboard. So, it's a state-of-the-art model.
What's the KCD, once again?
It's a purchasing tool.
I forget the D, association.
Yeah, it's a purchasing tool. They basically go out statewide, they're out of Kent, and they advertise different areas in which districts would want to purchase, so like stadium items.
Okay.
And so, they put out all the advertising on.
Paper, paint, all sorts of things.
Okay.
Yep, paper.
So, it's like a kind of the state bid for something?
Right, it is. So, you know, in schools, we also buy construction paper for classrooms, all sorts of things through KCD.
So, we can make the assumption that that $90,000 is a very competitive price for that?
A competitive bid. And actually, we have kind of, even though that's a lot of money, we have kind of slimmed it down when we were originally looking at scoreboards. They were coming in at $200,000. So, we asked the group, the athletics group, to go back and say, what is it that you really, really need? And come in with a different, and this is where we are. It's still very nice, but we don't quite need a Seahawks stadium scoreboard, so.
All right.
It will do a lot, and it will still be among the nicest in the state, you know, so.
Okay.
It's good for North Mason.
I'd entertain a motion to accept that contract.
So, move.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving the contract for the stadium scoreboard, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, we're moving right along. Number four. Board development and linkage, so superintendent's update.
Yes, and we will start with the budget status update. We'll do the other budget stuff later in the agenda, but you're up.
So, this is the June update for where we are currently. I'm presenting sort of the same format that we did last month, so since a few of you weren't here, this is gonna be new for a couple of you. We're using Forecast Five Dashboard Reports to present on general fund information. It gives us more detail. We'll start with our other funds, though. Our capital projects fund, we're sitting at about just under 2.9 million at the end of June. Debt service, we did make our debt service payments as of June 1st, and so, that dropped our debt service down to about 2.3 million. One of the things that helped our debt service fund was the collection of the state forest dollars and such that we're able to funnel into the fund. ASB, we're sitting at about $340,000 at the end of June. And it's probably gonna sit close to that throughout the rest of the summer, up until about end of August timeframe. Transportation vehicle fund, that we finally were able to make payment on that engine, got that invoice and got all that squared away, so we're sitting at 31,000. That's probably where it's gonna stay, other than some miniscule interest that's earned up until we get our depreciation payment from OSPI in August. The only thing that's changed here is the fact that we have our average enrollment for the school year. Our average enrollment for any given month was 2,184 students. Overall, that's a significant increase than what was budgeted and what we had in the previous year. So, now, onto general stats. I ended up including another report that I had not included in the previous month, just because I liked the details that it provided. The first page of the packet goes over our general fund revenues. One of the things that I wanted to be able to point out about this specific page, it's the revenue, it should be, can we scroll up to where we see the four colored semicircles?
Yeah, I like that, please. That is in the paper piece you provided there.
Yeah. Okay, so, on that, one of the things that I wanted to point out, so, we made that change a few months back regarding our minimum fund balance policy and bringing it up to 8% minimum. So, that very first semicircle, you can see that it says projected year-end balance as a percent of budgeted expenditures. We're currently sitting at 9.6%. So, it shows?
Which page are you on?
The very first page, it says general fund revenue.
Different packet?
We have this, we don't have the semicircle.
Oh, that's, that packet is the, our 18, 19 budget status packet. Our budget, this is our monthly board report.
Is it in here?
I didn't get that.
Okay. We're good. I didn't get that.
Okay. Well, we will get you a copy of this. Do you, how do you want to handle this? Do you just want me to?
Well, isn't it right here, the budget financials? No, she has the same thing.
That's, that's one piece of it. So, that is one page of it, but there's five pages. So, this is the last page that you're looking at right now.
I'm really willing to?
Oh, there it is. Yep, click on that revenue dashboard. Yep. There you go. Can you open it? There we go. There it is. So, the green semicircle is what I'm talking about right now. That gives us where we're currently sitting at as far as our fund balance to expenditures. So, we have that 8% minimum, and what that does is show us that we're currently at 9.6. So, it shows us that we are meeting our board policy for our minimum fund balance. The rest of them shows where we're tracking year-to-date as far as our revenues go for both state revenue sources and local revenue sources. Can we scroll down a little bit? And then, we get into our top 10 sources, year-to-date through the end of June, as far as where our revenues are actually coming from. Last month, I had pointed out that our state forest revenues were fairly significant. It was 829,000 last month. Now, we're up to almost $1 million in state forest revenue. That's no longer a deductible revenue, and that's money in our pocket.
So, they won't take it back?
Correct. We, I did receive the payment in our June apportionment, that I was able, basically, the sort of the back payment, because they had already taken out the deductible revenue in the previous period, so they gave it back to us in June. So, the other graphs, those are something that you guys can look at. That's trending prior year revenues to current revenues, and then revenues, budgeted revenues to current revenues. The next page is, takes the exact same format, but is for expenditures. Again, you'll see the semicircle that shows where we're trending as far as our year-end fund balance to budgeted expenditures, and it does show that we're over that 8% mark, which is what we're wanting to keep it above. It also shows where we're trending for our actual year-to-date expenditures overall, and then for salaries and benefits. So, it shows that we're sort of closing in on that year-end 100% mark. That's where we should be by, by the end of August. Our top 10 expenditures, year-to-date, goes into, you know, basic education, our sped services, business office, which is sort of like our operational side, all utilities, everything like that. People transportation and food service. I had mentioned briefly last month that our food service was having an extremely successful year. They, through the close of June, we are sitting just above the black, so we're basically breaking even, which is really, really good to see for a food service program. Michelle's done a lot of work to make sure that that's happened. Okay, so, our general fund, the next tab, month end. So, this, the dotted line is prior year solid lines, current year. It's showing in June, we're actually at 2.6 million. You're looking at 2.625 million right now. That's actually attached to the line from last year, so we're just under where we were last year. It does show us our projected fund balance doing a, sort of like a stark increase for next year, and then balancing out at about 2.8 million for year-end, based upon projections. So, our next tab, the financial summary. So, this goes into some more of the higher-level details as far as our revenues and expenditures and where we are against where we were last year. One of the things I did want to point out, in the second set of boxes, where you see current year-to-date annual budget and year-to-date percent of budget, there's a number down there, the $79,631. It's adjacent to your, the only red number on the page. That shows that we're currently in the black as far as revenues over expenditures. So, we have not expended more than we have received so far, and that's obviously what we would like to see. So, this final page?
But on the budget, were, for the budget that was set last year, were over budget?
We were expected to be over budget, and that was due to the debt service transfers for the stadium bond. So, when the budget was set, the budget was set to eat into our fund balance by 302,000. Now, of course, with us closing in on the end of this year, that's a completely irrelevant number at this point. The next tab, the final tab, I added this one. I hadn't given this one to you guys last month, but based upon the remarks that you guys had regarding the reports, I thought that you guys would find this really interesting. And one of the items that I really wanted to pinpoint shows some of the work that we've done district-wide to ensure that we're monitoring our finances. So, you see, the first section is all your revenues, broken down by, you know, our base revenue codes. So, the negative is where we're currently trending, or the red is where we're currently trending under what we had expected and what we had budgeted. You can see, like, state general purpose, so that's our apportionment. We're about $1.2 million over where it was budgeted. That's because that's of the increased enrollment. All of those other numbers up at the top on the revenue side that are currently in black are currently because of the increased enrollment. Then you go down to the expenditure side, and you see a lot of red. Okay, so that's where we're over budget in all of those areas. Certificated salaries, you have people that move up on the matrix, end up earning more than what had originally been anticipated, but $37,000, that's actually coming really close to what was budgeted. When you get into classified salaries, you're looking at a $300,000 increase right now. That's due to those negotiated PSE increases that took effect mid-year that weren't budgeted for, because we were still in the midst of negotiations. And that's why you see the increase in the employee benefits as well. But what I'd like to point out here is that black number that says $1.2 million right underneath that. So, that's what we consider our 5,000 series expenditures, so those are supply and equipment purchases. One of the things that we changed shortly after I started is we moved purchasing from credit cards over to POs. So, there's a more lengthy process in order to make any type of purchase. And what we've seen over the course of the year are charges, monthly credit card charges dropping from $200,000 a month down to about $30,000 a month. And then, we have now netted a $1.2 million savings in that, in that area. So, there's, there's multiple reasons for this. One, it's, obviously, if there's more paperwork that has to be done in order to make a charge or to make a purchase, people really think, you know, is this something that we really, really need? And on top of that, we have multiple levels of approval to make any of those purchases. So, because of the $1.2 million savings there, you can see, even though we're over in all those other areas, you net out to about an $800,000 difference over what was originally budgeted. The purchase service increase of the 1.4 million, that can be directly related to our increase in higher-need students this year and our need to contract out for special services. So, we were seeing an increase in costs related to those students, and a lot of times when we see mid-year, like, transfers in, the only thing that we can do is contract out. And so, you're seeing the 1.4 million dollar increase there because of that. Travel, it was just historically in the past, travel was always budgeted low, so that's why you're seeing the increase there, and capital outlay was budgeted extremely low last year as well. So, the net effect, though, shows us going over budget by about 819,000, but you can see the revenues on the top are over what was budgeted by 1.4 million dollars. So, as we see more revenues come in, you're going to expect to see more expenditures. So, overall, though, it shows us with a $600,000 surplus in those additional revenues that we are expecting to see through the end of the year. Do you guys have any questions regarding that?
Yeah, can you go back to the budget expenditures for travel and capital outlay? Why again were those budgets so low?
That was the practice of the prior finance director.
But have we ever spent just $1,000 on travel?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding the June reports? Okay.
The next report, as part of the, this section, as we've been having faith, is, I did want to bring it to your attention, a program that we began this year in partnership with Toastmasters. And it is a program specific to elementary school girls, and it is focused on growing leadership skills and opportunities for girls in the elementary school this year. They serve regularly, 11 total girls at the two elementary schools. The program is limited to roughly 10 girls at each school at the maximum. This was the first year of the program. The Toastmasters provide or train the adults to work with the kids. It's an after-school program. We partner on giving them that opportunity. We felt that it was very successful this year, and we are contracting to? We felt that it was very successful this year and we are contracting to continue allowing them to be in the buildings next year, working with our students again. So I just wanted to include that.
Is it just for girls?
It is only for girls.
Is there going to be opening it up to the boys?
No. This is, Toastmasters focuses on growing girls as leaders because historically, as girls get older and farther in school, they tend to take a step back and let boys, or boys tend to, to take those roles. So this is countering that. This is specific to growing young ladies as leaders.
Okay, any particular grade level?
It's elementary school, so it starts about first, second grade.
Well, and later on, they can, they can choose to go, boys and girls can choose to go into Toastmasters-
Right.
...and become, I was a member-
Right.
...but I was with men mostly.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, but they can do that. I think at high school age is where they can start doing it on their own.
Yes.
Yep. Very cool.
So we're excited about that partnership.
That's very exciting.
Capital Projects, do you have anything to report on that?
I do have some things to report on. So, let's see, we'll kind of start downhill and work our way up. At, at Feller this week, we, the flooring is going in and so we're getting very close. We have had some back and forth as far as the final inspections overall because we had bats, we got rid of bats, we had bats again, we're getting rid of them again. And hopefully it will be permanent at this point in time and the inspector will say, okay, good to go. We also had some back and forth on do this with the electrical because of the agent and then you don't have to, and then only yes you do. So we're getting all of that figured out, but we do believe things will be ready to go for preschool in the fall, so we're excited about that. I was walking through the jone last week and all the paint colors and everything are clean and bright and shiny and it will be a really nice environment. So we're looking forward to that.
Is there an opportunity for us to tour that maybe before it opens? Awesome.
Yep, we can set that up. We will expect to be moving stuff in as soon as the floors go down, even though there will be some other fine-tuning of some other things. We'll be moving all of the equipment and materials for the teachers in in the next couple of weeks. So that's exciting. The Student Health Center had a little hiccup because I think I've already explained, we had, have some asbestos abatement that needs to happen in the flooring. That is going to happen next week and then we'll move forward. If that, if the construction that needs to happen isn't ready in time for when we have scheduled sports physicals, we will do, they will, the staff will still provide the sports physicals for our students. We'll use the nurses station at the school to be able to do that. So we'll, the partnership will be going starting in August and as soon as we can get into the space, they will be in the space. We are going to, we've been talking with Peninsula Community Health about providing another opportunity for community volunteers to maybe do some of the receptionist duties in the Center for Peninsula Community Health. So there would need to be some training about HIPAA and all of those kinds of things, but that's something that we're looking at. So we're looking forward to that. The stadium building is on track to be completed by mid-August. We just talked about the scoreboard. It will be in, in time for the first home game on September fourteenth and running completely. And Mark is working with a group of community members on planning and, and working towards a new softball venue over on the Centrex Field location. I think that's all of those projects. I also want to bring to your attention that, you know, back and forth over the years, we've been working on the best way to create a partnership with someone, other agency that would become a new owner or, basically a new owner of the Feller Wetlands. I met on Monday, after a series of conversations and meetings with an entire team from the Department of Fish and Wildlife to talk about their very serious interest in taking over that ownership and managing the wetlands for the benefit of the community and the citizens of the area and the state going into the future. As we went through that discussion, we really talked a lot about what that could look like. And one of the things that became very apparent is that the district has an interest in maintaining significant or always access to the classroom and the exhibit center. And as we talked through things, the, the proposal that I will probably bring to you, that they will bring forward, that we will talk about together, would include the district maintaining the ownership of the classroom and the exhibit center and the little areas surrounding that, the gardens, and transferring, if, if we move forward with the transfer, transferring the wetlands land and water and trails portion only to Department Fish and Wildlife for them to become the owner of. You know, they have some concerns. Among those are that there is some work that probably needs to be done on trails and dykes and, and those kinds of things. And so from their point of view, the idea of, of grants that would cover the cost of that is important to them to be able to continue the process. But what I anticipate is that in the August meeting, I would like to have an agenda item for us to discuss about our continued interest in pursuing a partnership that would allow Fish and Wildlife to take ownership of the trails and wetlands portion of our properties and us to maintain the use of the classroom learning spaces. And so that's what I have to say about that. Any thoughts, questions?
I think that's a really, I like how you're breaking the, the classroom, kind of out of it and them taking that around it there. I would never want to lose that. But, yeah, there are some-
And, and their, their charge is conservation and providing access to the, to environments for citizens. It is not the educational piece and our charge is the educational piece. So if we're able to separate those two things and maintain both, both abilities of use of the space, I think that is, is the best of both worlds. It, there will be a process on both ends. The process will include public meetings to discuss and get input. And so it won't be a done deal when we discuss things in August, but we will be discussing whether we want to continue with this discussion and, and moving forward with Fish and Wildlife.
Would it be advisable to include the Salmon Center or at least inform them before they race out looking for grants to fix-
They have already been looking for grants and, and we have been talking to them about where we are and where we think they should be right now. So, yeah.
Okay.
I know some of our constituents have a particular concern about state agencies that may change their mind about the use of property. I presume we can talk about that at the appropriate time.
Yes, that's why I would like to make it an agenda item-
Yeah.
...in August for discussion.
Yeah, I'm, before exploring anything, as long as, as long as all the board and people have the, the opportunity to make their opinions known. So, okay?
Okay.
Good. So we'll move into the Community Linkage Planning Message of the Month. I know there is one big thing coming up next month, which is the Bulldog Invitational Golf Tournament at Lakeland that the boosters are putting on. I'm gonna try to make that, go out there and cause a lot of damage to Lakeland Golf Course with my, my horrible swing. But, that's what I know is going on, so. Anything else? Anybody else have anything upcoming?
Well, if, there are charitable agencies here that give their money to help the community, including the schools. And so if you all want to stop by Saturday at the St. Hugh Patio Center, I can tell you all about St. Patio.
St. Patio.
Anyway, we give all the, all the money goes back to the community. None of it goes into running the church. So it's a charitable thing, if you're interested in supporting it. We do give a scholarship to at least one student. They haven't done that, you know, in the Assembly, this kind of thing. Usually they show up on Sunday, but just to let you know it's there.
If, if I may also, August eighteenth is the United Way Day of Caring. Like last year, United Way is going to provide dumpster service for community members to bring things that they need to remove from their homes or property.
Hemesty Day.
Yes. And this year, because they anticipate growth in the demand, we are going to be setting up here in the high school parking lot. The football team is going to help people unload their stuff and get some community hours from doing that. It's on a Saturday. So it's from ninety-two. It would be great if any of the board members want to stop by at that and help unload cars.
I'll be bringing stuff to that.
It was a lot of fun last year. Last year we had three dumpsters going and, you know, they would take one away at a time, so we always had at least two there. Last year was the second year that United Way did it in Shelton and they moved from three to seven and had a hard time getting them emptied fast enough. And so they anticipate the same kind of additional usages this year. That's why we're doing it up here, so we can have seven dumpsters lined up.
Did you say that was the eighteenth?
The eighteenth, it's a Saturday.
And is there, I don't know if we have a flyer, but something that we can share?
It will be, they're, they're gonna hang a sign on the line, on the fence out along Highway three here by the bus barn.
Okay.
And so, and-
Our social media, I'm thinking, to get it out there so that-
Yeah, when United Way puts that out, we can send it out to social media as well.
Well, tomorrow is a street dance over in Shelton and I've never done that, I've never been there to that. And I don't, I think this is the first annual, but it's to highlight all of Mason County businesses and whatnot. And I just saw it a couple days ago and I was like, wow, what an interesting thing. And they're gonna like, do a dance, you know, and then it goes later, it starts like at eleven o'clock tomorrow. But it goes all the way through the day and then into the evening, they have some music playing and more dancing, but I think it goes, like, you can bring your kids at eleven, but then maybe adults can come Friday night, you know? I thought that was really interesting to get everybody together. And Shelton, you know, we tend to, we try to do step up here too, but, you know, nothing's going on here tomorrow so much, so I thought that's kind of a cool thing to go to. Kids during the summer, I've been told that I'm a very boring person. I thought it was really fun and I play Minecraft with my kid, but it's not good enough. So I think we're gonna go dance tomorrow.
Awesome, interesting. Anybody else? All right, so we're gonna move on to, oh, hold on a second, upcoming board letter columnists. And Leanna, you have August.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then Laura and then Arnold. Assurance of Organizational Performance and Policy Review. The first one up is our Governance Process Policies, which is completely on us to decide if we are happy with them or would like to change them. And I am more than happy to entertain any sort of thoughts on that. I personally don't have any, so.
Well, I'm really glad to read again that we, we are required to, once every four years, participate in the training regarding the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Records Act, and Public Records Retention, even though we do manage to hit that every year when we go to conference, just as a refresher, so I think it's a good thing. But also if we do miss it one year, we're okay.
Got something to add?
Yeah. Otherwise, I don't have any.
I approve public records and public meetings training.
Okay.
Just for the record.
All right, well then, I'm just gonna move on from that because I don't think there's a, any action to be taken if we don't have any changes to make.
Right.
The second one will be executive requirement to organizational continuity and executive Do you want to speak to your report?
Yeah, so, you know, the, the point of this report is that we have people who are learning and are in place who can take over my position or any other position across the district. And I think in, in section one, with being able to assume the superintendent responsibilities, really in cabinet, we probably have three people who are capable of that, Tom Warland, Lisa Roberts, and Anne Crosby. I have designated specifically in this report that the plan for next year, and part of it is her professional development for her as well, that the, the designee will be Lisa Roberts, who is, have, getting a new job title and some new responsibilities next year as the executive director of teaching and learning rather than director. And so she will have some responsibility for supervising some of our other administrators. And so this will be part of her learning as well. And that is, you know, at the behest of the board, talking about locus of control and, and my position, her, how we are organized throughout the district. So that's part of our new organization and that will be her, part of her new responsibilities. And then it is important for us to ensure that at the buildings as well, that we're able to move forward and that the assistant principals and/or other staff are able to step in as needed and manage those buildings. I think a really good example is we, we did have a last-minute administrative resignation. Todd Herring was offered a position that is the job he's always wanted, an elementary principal and, and actually about three minutes from his house. So he was very excited to accept that position on July first or second. And we were able to post, we had twenty-one applicants for the position, assistant principal at Hawkins. We had a very strong pool, again, as we did last time we did a hiring, but we had a team in on Tuesday that included representatives from our community as well as from each of our school-based, our NMEA and PSE were, were there represented as well, as well as our administrators. They selected a very fine candidate who in many ways is like Todd and, and will very strongly balance the pluses that Joe has as an administrator and bring some new things to the table as well that we think will make a really strong team. And so that's an example of how we continue to make sure that we have people in place that can do what needs to happen. We can, and again, the other thing we talked about in this line is where we are with emergencies. We've worked really hard, especially in the last couple of years, with training for staff members and administrators, with reviewing our plans, with ensuring that we have adequate plans in place. We meet monthly with our first responders to continue this work. And so I think that I can very strongly say that we have met the requirements of this.
I move that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with the requirements of ER two.
Okay, any discussion?
Great idea.
All right, hearing none, I will entertain a question. Those in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Those opposed? All right, ER two is accepted. All right, ends five, Responsible Citizens.
Okay, so Responsible Citizens starts with community service and registering voters. We continue to make efforts through our social studies classes at the high school, the counseling office, and other areas to register students as they become eligible as voters. Community service is a hallmark of many of our programs in our schools. Our students are visible throughout the community. They do an outstanding job, both at all grade levels- They do an outstanding job, both at all grade levels, actually starting at the elementary school. And they play key roles in events like the Giving Tree and Fill the Bus. This year is part of our partnership with United Way. United Way has proposed to both ourselves and Shelton's School District to be able to recognize outstanding students whose service is above and beyond with a student community service letter. And we are going to work with them to make that possible. And it's, it's a really big deal. Students who are going to earn that letter will have given the same number of hours to community service that a student does who participates in a varsity sport. And so that's, you know, upwards of 90 hours in a year or season. So that's pretty impressive, and we're excited about that. Number two is contributing to a safe and respectful environment. And that's something that we continue to focus on and need to work on as many schools. We have seen significant changes in student behaviors over the years, and we have had to try to figure out how to address those. As you know, that's part of why we made the change of adding an administrator of multi-tiered systems of support and took a really strong look at our programs and our approaches and are making significant changes for next year, which include additional staff, as well as additional training, as well as looking at what policies and/or procedures need to be adjusted. And so I believe we're doing the right work there. I did want to point out, I use the same charts that we have used for the last couple of years, just for continuity of what we discuss. And when we look at the discipline incidents by numbers of suspensions per students, we included two charts that compare the last three years. And one looks at specific subgroups of students that we have enough to monitor as subgroups, and one looks at just each school. When we look at the subgroups, I, there really isn't a lot to say, and whether you look at all students as evidenced by the light blue bar graphs, or the subgroups as evidenced by the line graphs that are overlaid on the bar graphs. There's, while there's an up and down within each of the subgroups, at least to some degree, it isn't enough to say that there's been a significant difference. And also, when you pay attention to the numbers, because these are reported as suspension counts per stu, average suspension counts per students, in this case, they happen to be a percentage of a school, of a whole suspension day. Because the highest level for homeless students district-wide in 16, 17, that average was between .3 and just over .3 of a day average per student.
Oh, so it's not .3 of our total population?
No. It's for, if every, if we took the number of suspensions, and this is a number used across the state, which is why I'm using this instead of just total number of suspensions. But if we took the total number of suspensions and spread them out among all of our students, then each student would have .3 of the suspension day, is, is what it means. Okay? So.
So roughly, what number of students does that represent? For homeless? For homeless?
For homeless? I will have to get you that example. I can do that. And then when you look at the, the second chart, that is by school. And you can see that in most of the schools, there hasn't been a significant positive change in, well, positive in what we would say positive. The numbers are positive, but we'd like to see decline rather than increase. So at all students, they've stayed relatively the same, at just about .15 per student. At Belfair, there's been a significant increase over the three years, still at below, at about the, the district, just below the district average. At Hawkins, there is a decrease over the three years with kind of a spike in 16, 17, but it is still much higher than the district. Hawkins is the highest at just between, just, just above .3, whereas the district is about 1.15.
Can you put that up, Denise? That graph, just so people can see?
So people can see what I'm talking about? Yeah.
Is that, is that just, I mean, having a middle school age child in my house, is that the age?
Middle schools tend to have a little bit higher suspension counts.
Mm-hmm.
But it, it's also an area that we've asked the middle school to focus more significantly on, and they've taken, as they did their planning for next year, they took into account very seriously, not just this kind of data, but the student feedback, remember on the CEED report? And they've taken that and met with a group of students, and will continue to do that to ask them how. School can feel safer and, and students can help us make the right decisions to bring these numbers down.
And then, that's always what I've been told by every parent who's had, had one, is it's always the hardest years with middle school.
It is a hard year, because when you hit middle school, all, it's, it's kind of a perfect storm for, you know, kids are getting to the point where they ask more questions, where they don't necessarily just do whatever.
They're told.
They're directed to do. They, there are also hormonal storms happening for them that make it even harder for them to do what they might choose to do. And so it, it does tend to be there, but there are things, steps we can take, and our, our staff is certainly looking at ways to improve that. So.
Two other comments that I have regarding the graph there and stuff. It strikes me as, we don't really know just by looking at the graph, is, say for the middle school, is that one kid that had a three-week suspension compared to everyone else? 'Cause that would spike. We don't know that from here. And although, when you see it three years in a row like that, well, it's probably not. And then on the other hand, is a personal observation is, while I wouldn't like, I'd like to see nobody get suspended because they've done so well, on the other hand, I appreciate that kids make mistakes. And I want them to make mistakes, because that's how they're gonna learn. I hope they're not as serious as a three-week suspension and stuff like that. But I would really wonder if it, if it all went to zero, what's going on? Are our kids not challenging, challenging us anymore or whatever? So just, just a comment on that side too. I don't feel awful to see numbers unless they say something special, and these aren't yet.
Okay?
I'd like to move that we find the superintendent has reasonably interpreted the position, interpreted the provisions of the ENDS policy, and further that the district is making reasonable and satisfactory progress.
Any discussion? I would like to see those, those kind of, that fine-toothed numbers as well, as per what Laura asked. Just, just gives you a really better picture of.
Okay.
The challenges and the, and the successes.
You will do that.
All right. Any other discussions on E5? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Policy review. ENDS 4, School Engagement. It is the board's expectation that all North Mason School District students demonstrate the individual character qualities, emotional strength, and social skills to succeed. They understand the importance of work and how performance, effort, and decisions directly affect their future educational and career opportunities. They contribute to the betterment of school and community and understand their responsibility to contribute to both family and society. Specifically, students will engage in challenging learning activities that require higher-order thinking, participate in a variety of co-curricular and extracurricular activities, develop employability skills and positive work habits through engaging academic opportunities, and attend school daily and on time.
I'm sure we're on the same page.
Well, I disagree. I think we are.
That was timely.
Yeah.
Well, obviously, this was discussed at the last meeting, and I don't see anything that needs to change here. It's a tall order, and we're not the ones that are making it happen. It's happening in the classroom and in the community and in the home. So this is kind of a tough one, I think, to measure, whether or not it's better now than it was last year, or any of those things. However, I do think it's important to have challenging goals, and this school engagement is a very challenging ENDS policy, but I like it the way it is.
My only comment is, I, I, for me personally, I like policies that we have control over. And for me, attending school daily and on time is, is really something we don't have control over.
Like I said.
Yeah. And so I, I think as a district, we can have, we can provide those opportunities for the first three. But four, I just, I, personally, I have a tough time with it, 'cause how do you?
Well, we could amend this policy, you know, and, and remove that fourth one. Certainly, we can control the first three across the state and outside of the state. Those who measure us, you know, whether it was when we had no child left behind accountability or now just accountability of the state, often use school attendance as a way to measure engagement. But certainly, we have, in the other three areas, things that we can measure, as, as we have done in our reports, that demonstrate what we believe to be proof of attendance. So I think it would be very acceptable to remove that one if that is causing discomfort for the board. I know certainly, and I don't want to speak for staff, but I know it can be frustrating for staff, going back to when I was one, to be held accountable for whether my kids come to school or not.
Right.
Even, even in just a report I'm writing about my school as a principal, or thinking about a classroom as when I was a teacher, you know? It's not always because the teacher's not, or it's rarely, I wouldn't say not always, that the teacher's not doing something right being the reason that a kid's not going to be in class, or that the school's not doing everything right being the reason that kids aren't going to come to school. It's rarely what's happening at school. What's happening at school can be a carrot to come, but it, but it is not usually, at least in our context, a reason that kids don't come.
Yeah, and I, I would think that having the first, I mean, like you said, the first three, if you're providing an environment, whether it's through, I know, I wasn't the greatest student at school, but activities kept me engaged. If you have those opportunities, that will, that gets the other part. So I, my own personal view is I would like to eliminate four, but I'm 1 of 5. So if you guys would rather keep it in, I'm.
Well, what was the conversation? I watched, I watched the, the videotape of the board meeting, and I don't recall exactly what the conversation was around this particular policy.
I would have to, to go back to it, 'cause I don't quite remember either.
But I do agree with, and as I've said, we can't control what happens before that student gets to school.
Or after.
We can't even control whether or not, as an elementary student, somebody is getting up and getting them off to school. So attending school daily and on time could be possibly a topic for one of our board letters, maybe mine, as schools starting to help, help families understand how important their part is in getting, and most families do. But there are some that don't, and I think that just knowing that, that they're a big part of what happens before that child gets on the bus, that's another big part. And then to school, to that happy, smiling teacher in September who's just loving having all those kids come back.
Well, I could see the reason for that. I appreciate everything we've said. It is a kind of measure of, do kids want to go to school? And that might have been the thinking of having it in ours. I mean, you're, I absolutely agree with everything that's been said.
I'm good with having it removed and just dealing with it as a topic, rather than putting it in the ENDS policy, because we, the only measure that we have is whether or not they're there.
Well, I think that's appropriate, and I think part of the beauty of our policy governance is that we modify it when it doesn't fit our experience. So I think, given our experience, just the discussion here this evening, it would probably be a good idea.
Is that something we would need to create an action on then, to change that today?
I think we could have a motion in the vote.
I would like to entertain a motion to remove from E4.
I move that we amend E4, School Engagement, to exclude item number four, attending school daily and on time, specifically because we don't have any control over that.
Any discussion?
Nor does the teacher in the classroom.
I, it's funny that it's there, and we've had it, but this is, we don't discuss that all the time, like the attendance and putting it out as a, something that we would like to remind people about. So maybe we, we should, as a board, remind our community or, and our parents to do that, because they don't understand sometimes how important it is. And a lot of times, there's things at home that are happening that school is a second thought. So maybe if there's, 'cause there, and there's help too. There's help at each of the schools, is if they're having trouble getting the kids involved and whatever, but if, that's something that we can put out annually, biannually, whatever, that, remember that we're here to help you if you can't. You know, if this is something that's second in your home, that would be cool, if we're going to eliminate it from our, from our policy, that we remember to put it out. And even if it's just a, something we put on our Facebook, you know, or something we put out in a newsletter or whatever, somebody touches it every once in a while.
Monthly column?
Yeah.
Did you read this or something?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up that way, since I wasn't here last, last month. I didn't participate in it either. I agree with you that that particular one is the heart, is a little bit off compared, not a little bit, a bunch off compared to the other ones, in that we have really no control over whether the kids attend school or not, other than by attracting them with great programs and stuff. I would, however, I'm gonna agree with, let's take it off. But I would like to address the issue of attendance, because it's, it's a law in some other fashion somewhere else, and I don't want us to forget that. That's all.
All right. Any other discussion?
I agree with Art. I think that we ought to discuss it, but I think it's more efficient if we don't have things that we're really gonna focus on and that we can control.
Well, can we put it into a, like in a monthly, or in our annual, I don't know, if you put it in the annual engagement calendar, we can call it, like, this is Awareness Month for the importance of coming to school and.
We can make it our August message of the month, you know, before school, or September.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, I think that would be awesome. Maybe now that's, I'm changing it completely and. Now that's my August message of the month, starting now.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of amending E4 to remove item four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that great dialogue on that.
It was.
All right. Where are we at? Oh, E1, ENDS 1, District Mission. We had a conversation about this last month with Beth Bork presenting, kind of, it kind goes together, the MTSS, which I think really goes with the mission. And it kind of hit it over. We kind of had a, let's say, kind of just bringing it down to whole child, whole school, whole community, just wrapping what we do into those three aspects. It kind of, uh, help me out here. Was it something that we'd want to change our mission statement to? Keep it, that, that's our focus, our grand focus, as opposed to having, I know one of the challenges with mission statements is oftentimes it gets, it gets stale. And as changeover happens with people and stuff, if they don't have that connection or that buy-in to a mission statement, because it was done a decade before they got here, it can be hard to have everyone on the same page and kind of going towards that same, that same path. So I do like portions of our mission statement with how we say to educate, empower, inspire, prepare. I do like that. But I think as now, it, it might be time to revisit it and just.
Well, is that something, I mean, educating the whole child and how that happens, is that something that needs to be included in the mission statement? Because the how of it and all, all that happens to make, to. Because the how of it and all, all that happens to make, to have someone, for us to educate, empower, inspire, and prepare all students, the, the how of that kind of dominoes down all the way to the classroom, um, and also with our community. So I don't know that we need to change the language in here as much as we need to elaborate, maybe in our monthly message, um, how we, how we want that to look out in the community and the home. We know how it looks in the school district, in the classroom. We're, we're make, we're trying to make that happen, and I think the missing piece is together with our community.
Well, and, and I think it's interesting, Laura talked about the how, and if you, if you put both statements together, it's possible that the current mission statement, and it can certainly even, you know, be changed. But the current miss, mission statement describes what we want to do, and certainly the phrase whole child, whole school, whole community can be seen potentially as how we get there by, um, the work that we do through that focus. So it could be that they go together really well.
I, I'd like to explore some way to get that into our brand though, into a way that.
Well, if you wanted to look at an egg, the yolk would be the mission statement, and the white would be everything that goes into that to make that happen. So this is a much larger discussion maybe than we can do.
Well, and, and I think as we engage on the whole style, child, whole school, whole community work, part of that might include pulling together the community again, like we did before my time.
Many years ago, right.
When we drafted this first statement, um, to provide input and help us, you know, pull that all together because the work that we're going to be doing focusing on whole child, whole school, whole community, um, is going to engage our community differently, what we hope. And bringing them into review and discuss the mission statement through a process like we've done before, might, it might be time to do that.
Well, these things aren't written in stone. My experience with these mission statements is not altogether happy. And, um, I think the whole child, what'd you say, whole child?
Whole school.
Whole school, whole community? It's implicit. The Mission North Mason School District, together with our community, there's the community, is to educate and empower, inspire, there's the child, whole school, whole community, whole child. There's a school involved because prepare all students to graduate, there's where the school comes in, in their abilities to meet life's challenges and opportunities. So I think it is implied in that statement. And that if somebody wants to add some subtext, that's fine. But I think with things like this, one sentence, and I think a larger thing would do more damage than clarification. The damage would be nobody created. But, but, and the advantage of this is I think it is accurate and short.
I think it's accurate and short, but then a lot of people could be losing something by putting whole child, whole school, whole community as a mission statement. I think that simplifies it for a lot of people that like to be progressive, move forward. It's a forward-moving thing, but a lot of people are looking for some meat. What's our mission? And they want to go look at it. And we could change words like the mission of North Mason School District, together with the whole community to educate, empower, inspire, and prepare the whole student as a, as a whole school, you know. And to put it, put the, the whole W-H-O-L-E into the mission statement isn't a horrible idea, but I like a little bit of meat there because there are people that kind of stand on the, I don't know, it's kind of a, a family and a, and when you put things a little bit more, I don't know how to explain this, um, when you put things so simple, even though that is super simple, but when you make it even more simple, it loses a little bit. It loses just a little bit, you know, people, a little bit of the heart, a little bit of that, couple extra words that we added just to put, show that we're, we have love here.
Well, if this were an academic paper, oh, excuse me.
What it is to me, no, go ahead.
This were an academic thing, we'd just put a footnote.
Yeah.
And the, the, the laid version of that, the de-weaponized version, is an asterisk.
Okay, so.
So my, my suggestion is that we, um, like you suggested, revisit this maybe with the community of people, including staff, including students.
Students.
You know, and, and it could be that we're talking about two different things. Certainly, we can reuse it and bring some folks together. But it could be that the statement of whole child, whole school, whole community is the vision of how we create, make this mission happen. But we probably need to have that conversation.
I just, yeah, and I just believe, I mean, if that's the work that, that's the basis of the work that's going on in the school, it needs to be a basis of the work we do as a board.
Yes.
And that way, we're all doing the same thing.
And we can also add it to our, you know, our logo. We have, we have a, with trees and a mountain and a little bit of water there, and we could add these words to that logo so it's there every day, all the time, where people remember it and get it in their, in their system.
That's creative.
That's beyond realistic.
It's not hard, I mean, it wouldn't look bad.
We've been fortunate to have in our district, a local, really grassroots philosopher. And I've heard this person quote, say, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it."
I just want to throw in a minor little monkey wrench. There are people out there in the community, I've run into some of them, that those terms whole child, whole this, whole that are bad things.
Sound socialist.
Whatever.
I like our mission statement. I don't, if we added or mixed it up a little, I just kind of liked it.
Can't make anybody, well, make somebody pissed off like, like him. Adding in stuff like, to get, getting a little bit more complicated, I think is asking for trouble. But I'm certainly open for further discussion on it down the road. And I don't think it's a bad idea to ask the community to come in and help us redefine this, even if it comes out to be the same thing. I'd be happy with that too.
And, and the other way to look at this, maybe kind of from the other direction, is as we engage in the work with Beth, with MTSS, with focusing on whole child, whole school, whole community, the work that we have planned for the coming year is going to engage the students more, is going to engage the staff more, is going to have an, an opportunity to engage the community more. So it may be that through the work we do with multi-tiered systems of support this year, we generate, um, the, some, some new ways of looking at things that come back to a change in this as well. And then it comes through the work rather than, and, and that may be, um, meanier and more effective than having meetings just to talk about the words rather than to be talking about the verb.
Great, all right, thank you everybody. All right, so moving on to the public hearing for the budget extension. And this calls for acting on a budget extension resolution. Ashley, you want to?
I think you.
You have to adjourn into the public session.
Do I?
Yeah. You can still stand up there.
You can, you don't have to go away.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn the, I'm not going to hammer down, but, or adjourn the normal, regular meeting and go into this budget extension.
Here we go.
You're on.
Okay, here we go. So, um, I've been talking throughout the year about the fact that we were going to be over budget. Well, we are going to end up being over budget, um, like we had anticipated. Right now, um, our actual year-to-date expenditures through June is twenty-three million, three hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. Our approved budget is for twenty-six million, nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four, meaning we have capacity left remaining to get us through the end of August of three point six million. Our payroll each month is about two million, so that's four million alone, plus we have our general AP expenditures. So we're going to need to increase the seventeen eighteen budget by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get us through the end of the year. The seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars does not eat into our fund balance. A lot of that's just the additional revenues that were coming in from OSPI anyways. So as we saw those increased revenues, obviously, we saw the increased expenditures that came hand in hand. Our ending fund balance, um, looks to, like it will end up being more than where we were at last year, as it is.
So Ashley, we won't have to do a budget extension then?
No, that's, that's what this, it is a budget extension for seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Yep, so it will bring us up to twenty-seven million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, and our current budget is for just under twenty-seven million. It's at twenty-six million, nine hundred and eighty-eight. So it's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar extension to get us through August thirty-first.
But that money's already coming in. You just want to extend the budget so that we can collect that money that it's already coming in.
So the budget is based upon expenditures. And so even though we see increased revenues from the state, because our budget isn't based upon those revenues, it's based upon the expenditure side, we have to go through, put together this resolution. I send a letter off to the ESD. The ESD turns around and sends this and the letter off to OSPI, and then OSPI grants us the, um, extension. You guys did an extension last year as well. It just wasn't for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It, I think it was in the three hundred thousand dollar range. So do you guys need any additional information regarding the extension?
I don't think so. Is there anybody who would like to speak on behalf or against the budget extension?
No.
I move we approve the.
Public comment.
Public comment. Sorry. It's under there.
But it's, okay, so with that, thank you.
Okay.
I entertain a motion for the, to, um, for the budget extension.
Regarding the resolution.
For resolution zero eight G dash eighteen, to, uh, for the general fund budget extension.
We have to go back into the, into the regular meeting.
Oh, yeah, this is awesome. Be president, they said. All right, so we'll turn the hearing, go back into the regular meeting.
Wow, that was really something.
That's awesome.
Okay, I move we approve resolution eight G eighteen, general fund budget extension.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, resolution passes. All right, now, two thousand eighteen nineteen budget.
Okay, so this presentation is going to, um, look a lot like the presentation you guys saw last month. The numbers have just been, um, more solidified at this point. So we start with our enrollment. No changes were done to that. We're still, um, budgeting, um, sort of, well, for, this shows the trend. So it shows the two thousand one ninety-three for seventeen eighteen, but it shows that we're budgeting our enrollment at two thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine FTE for next year, which is an increase of thirty-six students from this year. The next slide regarding staffing. This shows an increase of twenty-eight total staff split between certificated and classified staff, and it shows our past ten year of history as far as how our certs and our classes were split. Next slide is regarding our two thousand eighteen nineteen general fund. So we're estimating a beginning fund balance of right about two and a half million dollars. Our revenues and other financing sources are expected to come in at thirty-two million, sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Our general expenditures are looking to be about thirty-one million, nine hundred seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Of course, this is, this can change. We are currently open for negotiations, and so this is not a, a completely solidified number until we are able to, um, ratify and find out what our payroll's going to look like for next year. That also, there's, could also be some differences based upon, on federal funding. We don't have all of our federal numbers back as far as what we're going to be receiving for grant funding for next year. Transfers out to debt service fund in order to make our payments for loans and bonds is going to be four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and six dollars. So that's a required transfer from the general fund to the debt service fund to pay for those. That brings us to an ending fund balance next year of the two million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Next slide.
Can you do the quick math for me? That's over the eight percent.
Um, it is going to be right around the eight percent, but it's not at the eight percent. So that's going to have to be something that we're going to be looking closely at. A lot of it's going to be based upon negotiated salaries going into next year.
And enrollment.
Yep, and our enrollment. We did budget our enrollment on more of the conservative side going into next year just because we do not want to get ourselves into a position where we're overestimating enrollment because then what happens is OSPI will pay us those larger amounts in September through December, and then come back and collect those monies throughout the rest of the school year. And we don't want to end up on that side. There's some other districts that, that got themselves into a little bit of trouble doing that. So we estimated enrollment on more of a conservative, conservative side. We'll be able to true everything up as we get into next school year and see what those numbers are going to look like. So the only thing that had to be updated on this is that two thousand eighteen nineteen budgeted column because our revenues did, um, increase from what I had originally reported based upon some new data that had come in. Our local, um, non-tax, so our property taxes with our rollback, um, is expected to be about three point nine million dollars. The, the biggest change that we're seeing here is under our state general apportionment from, uh, budgeted seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen. We're looking at almost nineteen million dollars there alone. Um, and that is with the more conservative, um, FTE budgeted enrollment numbers. Our state categorical is also increasing fairly significantly. A lot of that is LAP, um, high poverty dollars that we're getting in from the state. Our federal dollars, I was really hoping, hoping to see, um, a steeper climb in federal funding based upon some information I had seen in the news, and we're not seeing it here. Unfortunately, we, we did not get as much, uh, federal dollars as I was hoping for. Luckily, we, um, got quite a bit more in state to help make up for that. And then other sources, um, these are, can be your local donations, payments from other school districts and such. We're looking at about a hundred and eighty-one thousand, bringing us up right over thirty-one million. The difference though, you can see from, uh, two thousand seventeen eighteen budgeted to two thousand eighteen nineteen budget is fairly significant. So next slide is our expenditures by activity. So this sort of breaks it down into our main areas. So instruction takes up about almost seventy-five percent of the budget. A little bit over seventy-five when you bring in the instructional support for the staff as well. Then we have food service, uh, just under a million dollars. Pupil transportation, um, our maintenance and operations is up a tad bit, up to almost ten percent. Other services, so this would be like your IT department. And then public activities, right now, that's sitting there for Theller. As Theller transitions, um, this is like the utility costs and such for, for Theller. You're going to see that start to go away. Because once it's utilized as a, um, educational building, it's no longer considered a community service building. District support, so this is your, um, all your business services, utilities, everything funneling through there. So that's about five percent. Next slide, our expenditures by object. This breaks it down specifically, um, salaries, benefits, and basically supply materials and travel. You can see on that travel line, we have about a hundred and eighty-seven, almost a hundred and eighty thousand going to, um, travel. That capital outlay piece is for what we're hoping to be a new roof for Sand Hill. So we're, we're trying to set aside some, uh, money for that. Certified salaries is right under forty percent, and classified salaries is just over fifteen and a half percent. And then, of course, we see the increase to the benefits due to the increase of salaries for both, uh, classified and certificated staff. Capital projects, um, the revenue sources for this is great view. School district payment, this coming year, we're going to see our last three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar payment from them. In the past, they've been paying six hundred and fifty thousand a year. We have one payment left. We have one payment left, so we're down to just that final three twenty five. We also have state match and state forest. State forest, that's going to be super hard to budget for in the future, especially because they cut down quite a bit this year. Hence, the reason we've almost received a million dollars. But obviously, trees are a renewable resource, but they don't tend to grow from one year to the next. So, we'll probably see a decrease there.
I didn't understand that state forest money had to go into capital projects as a requirement?
A portion, not all.
Okay.
Not all. A much smaller portion than what goes into general fund does go into capital projects. The reason being is those dollars for state forests are meant to make up, it's in lieu of revenue. Because you have those state forests, you don't have the infrastructure of other businesses paying property taxes, so your property tax collection is lower. And so, what they were doing is they were offsetting it by paying these state top, these state forest dollars. So, then, as they cut the trees down and more infrastructure can be built, you receive less. So, our property taxes get split, and then, so does state forest. Our expenditures currently, we have our stadium project, and then, we're, we're still working on closing out the high school, the middle school. But we've gotten really, really close to certificate of completions on those. There's not very much left on the books as far as total expenditures left to pay out on those. I think we're forty thousand on one, sixty thousand on the other, and then, those will be done. So, the majority of that is left for the stadium. So, we're looking at about two point five million beginning fund balance. The revenues coming in are expected to be about a little over one point five million. Expenditures, and obviously, this is a ballpark, but we're expecting just over about a million dollars left in expenditures. And ending fund balance with what we have coming in would be about two point nine million. Our debt service fund, we're looking to start the year at about two point two million in our debt service fund. We have about three point four million dollars coming in to the debt service fund, and then, the expenditures are expected to be about three point two million. We're going to start seeing this significantly increase in the coming years due to increased principal payments and interest payments on our bonds. So, at some point, we'll have to reevaluate what we're doing with our bonds. But we should be ending the year at about two point three, just under two point four million dollars in our debt service fund. Our transportation vehicle fund, our beginning fund balance is expected to be about a hundred and fifty three thousand. We're at about thirty two thousand now currently. Our depreciation payment in August is only expected to be a hundred and twenty two thousand. Will take us right under a hundred and fifty four thousand. We're expecting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total in revenue into our transportation vehicle fund this next year. A hundred and twenty thousand of that is for depreciation for next year. And then, the other thirty five thousand dollars is for the bus grant that I got. That will help offset the purchase of the bus, which is our expenditure you can see down below.
That just one bus?
Oh, I know, yes. The, the prices, I, we've already pulled some quotes, and for a conservative bus purchase, a hundred and forty thousand when you factor in tax. And this is up twenty thousand from the prior year when we purchased three buses. So, twenty thousand dollar increase in one year.
Our new fire engine was half a million dollars. And ladder truck was a million. Things are expensive these days.
Yeah, so, what, what we'll be doing is we'll be keeping an eye on that Department of Ecology grant. So, if it comes open again next year, we'll apply for it again next year. Getting thirty five thousand dollars back on a bus purchase when you're spending a hundred and forty thousand, that at least helps offset it a bit. It's basically almost a new engine if we happen to have an engine fail, knock on wood, next year. So, next, we have our A S B. So, our beginning fund balance is expected to be around two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. The buildings have projected their revenues to be about four hundred and thirty two thousand dollars through fundraising type activities. Expenditures are expected to be a tad bit over what their revenues are. So, they're expecting to eat into their fund balance by about four thousand dollars that next year, but their fund balance can maintain that, so it should not be an issue. So, that's what we're looking at right now for budget for next school year. Overall, everything's actually looking fairly solid. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, because you brought it up. Debt service fund with the bonds.
Uh huh.
What is, what are you looking at?
We have a few much smaller loans, energy loans that you guys had gotten back in two thousand eleven, I think it was. They don't have much left on them. But the amount that we're paying in interest, when technically, if we prioritized it, we could pay them off, that's something that we should probably look at. Because the payments for those are transferred directly from the general fund anyways. So, they're not coming technically from the debt service fund. You still make the payment out of debt service fund, but we have to transfer from the general fund to the debt service to make those payments. So, that's something that would be a possibility based upon what we, what our general fund is looking like at that time. We also, probably not within the next year or two, we may want to look at potentially doing some refunding of our larger bonds as our principal payments start to.
Refunding or refinancing?
Refinancing. As our principal payments start to increase significantly over a very short period of time. A lot of that's going to be dependent upon where our fund balance is sitting and how, how we're being funded at that point. But it's something that we definitely want to continue to monitor, especially with the stadium bond, because that's coming out of the general fund, the payments for that. So, we don't want to let it get too high, or else it's going to start sucking money from the general fund.
Were those interest rates higher than what would be today, that we were able to get those bonds at?
Not necessarily, but the, when you go through that process and you just extend it out, if those principal payments become too large to handle for the fund balance, it's like refinancing anything else. Yeah, you spread the payments over a longer term, but you end up paying less. And that's why it really depends on what your fund, fund balance is looking like, especially with those transfers from the general fund over to.
Debt service.
Yeah. We had, I think the bond was taken out at like three point nine million dollars for, for the stadium, three point nine three zero. So, if we were to keep that in line for the life of the bond, you pay a significant amount in interest.
When, right now, just at a steady and not attacking it, would we be paid off?
Oh, we've only, I've only made two payments on it. It was, was our first year of payments this last year, so.
Nineteen more years?
Uh, yeah.
It was a twenty year bond?
Yeah. Yeah, so, no, there's quite a while, there's quite a while left on those, but those two smaller energy ones, we.
I think that was what I was talking about.
Okay, those, I think we have three years left on one and four or five years left on the other, but we only owe a hundred thousand on each of them.
Attack that.
Yeah, so, that's the thing, is we don't owe much left on that whatsoever. And that would take care of the, not having that need to do the transfer from the general fund over to the debt service to continue to pay those.
Yeah, no more growing interest.
Seems like that would be a good use for the timber money. Because, I mean, it's not a known, every, it can change from year to year. It's not a stable source of funding, and if we get a bump.
Yeah, it's not something we can rely on.
Right.
Exactly.
That's what, when we, when I did budget before, when we were doing that, we would potentially do an extension at the end of the year. If like, I mean, we got almost a million dollars this time, and it was huge, even for a small pork up there, the huge amount that they got, we had budgeted for it. But if we didn't, that's where we would use that again.
Yeah.
So, I think that would be.
And Dana and I had briefly talked about that as an option in these, in these coming years, to attack those smaller ones and get those off of our plate, because then we only have two that we're handling, and it's both of our larger bonds.
Yeah, we can always justify extending it through that, definitely, forever.
Yeah, and due to growth in facilities needs, we're going to need to address a new bond very soon for elementary schools. So, we want to make sure we're clean as we can and have those things are addressed and simplified.
Yep.
Amen.
Yep.
Thank you, Ashley.
Okay.
All right, so, we're going to, once again, open up a public hearing if anyone would like to speak on behalf of the budget. Okay, we'll close the hearing, go into, back into the meeting. I see I was a little bit more smooth that time.
You were.
All right, and so, we're going to go into the adjournment. So, we're going to open up once more for any public comments, announcements?
I think I saw last time, I had a great time graduating. I never saw any when I was out taking pictures, but I got to run into so many people that I hadn't seen. People who had kids in school or graduated, that was, that was a very positive thing for me.
All right, anyone else? All right, so, we'll go to board and superintendent. I'll give the superintendent first opportunity to make any closing remarks.
Yeah, one thing I did want to share is just received notification that Greggy has selected a new superintendent. Her name is Ellen Perconti. She served the last few years as superintendent at the United, so she's very familiar with her partner for the rest of the superintendents in Mason County. I'm accorded part in her, and I'm in the main district and we meet these of our kids, so that's very exciting. I'd love to share.
Okay.
All right, Laura?
Yes, I just happened to. One of the tasks that I do, and I have always wanted you folks to have a bigger role in it, is I'm asked to, as the legislative representative, to give the top fifteen, what would be my top fifteen priorities for the hundred and fifteen, twenty items that are standing legislative positions or that have been proposed, new ones, you know, that have been proposed this year. And I've sort of done this on the Wayne Morse model. Some of you may remember the Senator for Oregon, who made a point that when you vote for me, you vote for me to exercise my judgment. And so, that is basically the model I have used. I would prefer to have more consultation with you folks, but as you can see, the sheer number of items would, would make that extremely difficult. And so, what I would propose is that we might have a study session, say, before our next meeting. And since Craig and I are both going to the WASDA meeting, and people will all be, you know, voting on that, the membership will be voting on the positions that we'll hold for this next year. He and I could discuss, or I could send you, or I have, I would have Dana send you just a list of the items. Maybe it's not so informative, because they're just titles. But you could also get on the WASDA page and find some information about them. In any event, we could, if we met before our next meeting, and that would be just before we go to WASDA, Craig and I would be at least open to, for your questions or observations, or we'd have a discussion, since we couldn't go through them, you know, one by one. If you could look the, those things through and come up with your own agenda items, and we could just talk about that at that time, just the notes that Craig and I might take would certainly influence. I would want to have your preferences as part of the fifteen that I've got to have to perform my office at WASDA.
Do you already have fifteen?
I have, the WASDA Legislative Committee, as a member of that, I was supposed to express my preference, so I did. I have fifteen.
Why don't you send us the fifteen that you've landed on?
I could send that to Dana.
All right, and then, we could look on the webpage.
Yeah.
At the rest of them and see if we see anything that we prefer more than that.
Right.
I don't know if we need a whole study session, do we, for that, Craig?
I, I would like to at least leave open the, the option on it, just in case there is something that comes up glaring that said, ooh, this might warrant further discussion. Not to say we have to, but maybe within a week or two, make that decision.
When are you going?
The WASDA conference is the day after our September meeting. John will already be gone.
I'll be gone on Thursday.
So, we could do this in September, not August. We could have.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, right, it might be good to have the study session at similar time.
Well, closer, closer to your meeting, I think that would be.
But I'd like, like, the option open, and that way, if we don't need it, we don't need it. But if there's just something that.
Sure.
My own personal view is going there just to kind of gauge how it's going to be with regionalization. That's still, to me, is a big, a big deal.
Right.
So. Look, and all I did was I did spend some time on it. It wasn't just the hour today, but I've done this at other times. I went through and just sparked, I just put an asterisk, not a number, on all the ones that stood out for me. Because I know that we discussed them before. I know that certain ones are priorities that we've, we've discussed, and so, or that I've heard us discuss or Dana mentioned. So, I went through then, the next time, and gave them a number. And then, I went through them again to see if I wanted to critique what I'd done. So, it's a bit of, I'm asking for nobody's sympathy. I'm just telling you the nature of the job.
We totally feel sorry for you.
I'm happy to do this.
Yeah, okay, why don't you just share those?
Okay.
Can you do that as soon as, as you can?
Yeah, I can arrange for Dana. I think Dana, you do what you have, you are.
I have the big list.
Well, it, would it be bad if he sold, sent the big list and then his picks out of it?
No, I can do that, as long as you just, we need to discuss it in.
I know, but like, because you said we could go and look it up before we come to discuss it? If we did that sooner than later, then we're.
And then schedule a work study session to discuss it.
Yeah, you'd get, you'd get, we were, we were asked to, the WASDA people were asked to, the legislative council people were asked to evaluate three programs for the delegates to fill out. I found all of them confusing. Nothing like a piece of paper. I can't see the whole thing. But, so, I made my comment on that, but it happened to list all the items by title. So, that just struck me as a, one instrument that I could get you out something with a little bit of research on your own. Working with the WASDA page, you could probably find more elaborate descriptions of all those. Those may help you in preparing for this meeting, whenever we have it.
Thank you, thank you, John, for doing all that.
Awesome, okay. Board self-assessment of the meeting.
Well, what about?
Oh, I'm sorry, Spencer, you have anything?
No.
I didn't have anything. Board self-assessment of meeting, and that is art to me.
All right, trying to do this as quick as I can. On general meeting behavior, we have the whole list of things that I put satisfactory on all of them, but they're things about well-planned agenda. We follow our agenda. We were prepared for things, or we contributed to the meeting. Our deliberations and decision-making process are public. Participation was balanced. Everybody did have a chance to get into, to go swinging, I guess. I did, I thought we all listened attentively, attentively, and I didn't hear any side conversations. Work was conducted in an atmosphere of trust and openness, which I really felt tonight. And we treated each other with respect and courtesy. So, that was all the satisfactory stuff. Under the governance principles review part, we actually made some policy change this time. Anyway, but our actions occur at the policy level rather than the operational. That was certainly the case with our item today. We review the policy about each topic before discussing that issue. I'm not quite sure we actually do that thoroughly, but when it was pertinent, we certainly bring, we haven't had any problem doing that. We didn't write an additional policy. We subtracted is what we did today. So, I can't say anything, I'll just put N A. We minimize time spending, minimize time monitoring past performance. We routinely, routinely dedicate time to reviewing and improving our process, and that was reflected in, both those things were reflected in what we did do. We clarify and prioritize our values when considering potential outcomes, and that is really the best, the best part of what we do when we talk together here, and I really like that, I appreciate that. And I love it that at board meetings, we are actually talking to and with each other. That is what the board meeting is for. We follow an annual calendar based on a plan for doing its work. We have that certainly in there tonight. The board chair helps the board efficiently. The board chair helps the board efficiently conduct its meetings, and the rest of us help him too, when he can't figure out how to do a public hearing.
Rookie mistake, rookie mistake.
Oh, it's just fun. And we spend most of our time deliberating issues, defining, clarifying our vision, and we support the superintendent in any reasonable interpretation of our policies. And I wrote yes for all of those items there, so we have one not applicable and everything else satisfactory, or a yes. So our overall rating from me is satisfactory. Anyone have any comments, anyone want to add?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Next board meeting will be here, August 16, 2018, at 6:30 PM. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Did you say August 15th or 16th?
16, one six. Alls in favor?
Aye.
You don't have, you don't have to actually have a vote on the adjournment.
I did it. I did it. I had a vote.
We're actually super democratic.
He stepped out.